Everybody, to the November seventeenth Town Council meeting, we'll begin with two public hearings. The first public hearing is ordinance O dash twenty-two dash twelve and ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending chapter two ninety of the zoning ordinance. Before I ask anybody in the public if they would like to come up and comment on this, I do want to share with the public that I anticipate two amendments from members of the council. Okay? I anticipate, I anticipate Councilman Jaworski to move to amend the zoning text amendment seven, Article five, section two ninety, nineteen A, under the table requirements. This has to do with building height. And the amendment will read, "For buildings in the designated hundred-year floodplain, the building height may be measured from the flood protection elevation as defined in the floodplain management ordinance, chapter one forty-nine Town Code." In addition to that, I anticipate an amendment from Councilwoman Bodine. It has to do with the, the building, the building height section at the start, first page. And the amended wording would be, "A building height shall be measured by the average, normal, not elevated, finished lot grade. The height shall be, shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence railing, and other rooftop addition." Having, having said that, ordinance O dash twenty-two dash twelve, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? Please, please step forward, state your name and, and address.
Eric Blitz, on behalf of the Rodden Reel, forty-one sixteen Mears Avenue, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. As the council should have received my letter that provided the details of the Rodden Reels comments on ordinance O twenty-two twelve before you, what I'd like to focus on is the definition of the maritime commercial district. In the plan that was submitted and passed by this council, it had four bullet points describing the maritime commercial district. These descriptions are meaningful, they're substantive, they're what are used for determining what are called consistency determinations, if there's a change. And what the ordinance that has been proposed removed the first and probably the most important defining characteristic, and so your ordinance no longer matches up with what the comprehensive plan that you passed. The bullet point that was removed reads, this is with respect again to the maritime commercial district, "Promoting the diversity of maritime and water-related commercial uses and intensities that have long defined the town's historic waterfront." All the prior hearings of the public included this bullet point as part of the definition of the maritime commercial. This bullet point was included in the drafts that were regularly reviewed of the comprehensive plan by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was included in the plan that was held at a public hearing in November by the commission. It was passed by the commission and sent to you, so it was in the plan that was brought to you. It's in the plan that you passed. And then what they've done is removed it. And the purpose, I submit, of the removal is they don't like the idea that it's the same intensity as the historic waterfront. But that's what you passed, and an ordinance that implements a comprehensive plan is supposed to be consistent with it. And that's what their essential job was to propose to you an ordinance that implemented the comprehensive plan that you've already passed. And with respect to this missing bullet point, I would submit that it, they failed in that regard, and that you should amend the ordinance to add that bullet point back in so that it reads just as your comprehensive plan that you passed in April of this year. And I would note that the commission held a hearing to propose this ordinance after you planned, after you approved the commission, the comprehensive plan, they had a chance to fix this, and they didn't. So that's, that's the balance of my testimony.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else in the, in the public who'd like to come forward and make a comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Greta Clark. I live at seventy-nine fifty-two Stream Walkway in Richfield Station. I have lived at this address for over sixteen years. We are the original owners, and we have enjoyed many benefits of living in this wonderful neighborhood. My husband and I have two teenage daughters who have enjoyed living at the bottom of a very quiet street since we built the home in two thousand and six. We also have some neighbors here that are also living on our street that are here to support me talking.
Would you do me the, the pleasure of asking your neighbors who are here to support you to stand up? So who's left from Richfield Station?
There's still more coming, they're just not.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
So I'm here to testify in support of the ordinance, which details the resource conservation area amendments. I believe the purpose and intent of this ordinance is to maintain the small-town charm of Chesapeake Beach, specifically Richfield Station, which seeks to protect our town from further development. We currently have twenty-four homes on our street, and I know the developer would like to build at least forty-one more, although I've seen varying numbers of that on our street alone. We do not currently have sidewalks, and it is quite difficult to have two cars passing each other when neighbors have to park on the street, which is quite often. So if the developer is granted to build additional homes, we're talking about at least, if we go off the forty-one, at least eighty more cars from those new homes, not forgetting school buses, trash, recycling trucks, snowplows, and anything else that has to go down our street, turn around and come back up. The construction for these additional homes, including work construction trucks, will no longer keep our street quiet. In fact, it will be the opposite, and will be quite dangerous for the many children and people who enjoy walking or riding their bikes up and down our street right now. Therefore, I would like to see the areas on my street, Stream Walkway, and in the back of the neighborhood, on Crestview Lane, be considered resource conservation areas to end any further building. The areas surrounding these streets should be protected to maintain the wetlands, surface waters, and especially the wildlife habitats. I know firsthand the abundance of deer, birds, foxes, eagles, and other wildlife that live in the nature preserves surrounding those areas, and specifically by my house, since I'm at the bottom of the hill. And not protecting this, these wildlife habitats would be very neglectful. I support this ordinance and hope that it will be passed to protect the natural resources in these areas and limit any further development. I ask the town and the mayor to pass this ordinance to ensure no more development will take place in or around Richfield Station.
Thank you for coming out, out this evening and making comment. And, and thank you to all your neighbors and friends, too. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to make comment at this time? Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. Gary Luckett, eighty-one thirty-two Bayside Road, Chesapeake Beach here. I have your neighbors, I'm right next door. Just want to speak strongly in opposition of the ordinance passing in retrospect to the thirty-four feet in height, especially as a commercial owner and right, located right here in town center. I'm one of the oldest structures, I believe, left that hasn't done anything with its property. So my building, I think, is approaching sixty-five years of age. And in some aspects, I'd like to do something with it. Tear down, make the maximum of my property, but I'm governed on restriction. I can't even be taller than the local water park, can't be taller than the existing community center. I can't even be taller than my neighbors across the street of unlimited number of townhomes. I just thinking, need to voice my opinion and strongly oppose it, and wish there should be some consideration to commercial owners with their ability, what they can, can and cannot do in the future.
Thanks for your comment, sir. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll move on to the second ordinance, ordinance O dash twenty-two dash thirteen, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the Chesapeake Beach zoning map. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to, to that? Yes, please come forward. Y'all don't have to stand, I knew who you are.
Hello. Okay. Greta Clark again. I'm here to testify in support of the ordinance O twenty-two thirteen to amend the zoning map. I agree with all the changes set forth in the zoning map and ask the Town Council to approve this map to preserve our natural resources. That'll be protected under these resource conservation updates. And I want to remind you all how important it is to preserve Chesapeake Beach as a charming small town that we all call home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to, to make a comment on this ordinance? Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council. My name is Joe Devlin, I'm an attorney at the law firm of Council Baradell, Cosmoline, and Nolan in Annapolis. And I'm here to testify, consistent with correspondence that we've already provided to the council. I do want to formally provide to the council the letter that we provided to you, Mr. Mayor, and the other members of the council with the exhibits to make sure that that is formally in the, in the record. I also wish to provide to you the letter dated August twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two, provided to Mr. Jakubiak and the Planning Commission, which I think also was submitted to you all, as well as, letter dated September twenty-eighth, also sent to Mr. Jakubiak and Ms. Green Goal of the Planning Commission, that similarly defined our position. So let me get one other thing. So with that, I'd like to provide to you the August twenty-nine letter, the September twenty-eight letter, and I need to get the other letters. Excuse me just one moment. So that those are fully part of the legislative record.
So we, 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 we have seen this, it's in the record, broadly distributed. One more time.
And our position is, is simple as outlined, but I want to make sure the public understands it. To my understanding, not a single member of this council was in Chesapeake Beach in nineteen ninety-two. This project was commenced in nineteen ninety-two as a result of an annexation of acreage into the town at the request of the town, and as a result of an agreement between the developer and the owners and the town. The project was, at that time, the result of three resolutions by the Town Council that created an RPC development plan. And you will find with the exhibits we provided you, as well as an aerial photograph, that in fact, over the twenty-plus years, almost thirty years, the community has been developed exactly in accordance with that RPC plan, but for a few changes necessitated by engineering and other requirements. Specifically, the two areas that we are concerned about is what's called Block Q. There's thirteen lots in Block Q, which is, if you're looking at the map, it's to the right-left side. Block Q is thirteen lots that were approved numerous times in twenty-thirty. Fifteen recorded and resulted flats, but those fifty-four lots, forty-one of them are in the RPC zone, thirteen of them have been taken out of the RPC zone. All of those were approved as part of the original RPC and were approved in two thousand and fifteen for recording, consisting with that plan, including preliminary plat, record plat, sediment erosion control plan, sediment erosion control, stormwater design plan, storm drain design plan, as well as a bridge crossing with MDE, which remains in effect today. These are not new lots, these are lots that were approved. They were not recorded because there was an engineering issue. Mr. Woodburn, the town engineer, and Mr. Repke determined that it was better to sit on those and wait on them because it was a dirt issue essentially. But those thirteen lots are not new lots. And if you look at the map that we gave you, the RPC plan adopted in nineteen ninety-two, all of those lots are shown there. The only difference is that because the adjacent property owner on that, I guess would be the south side, would not provide access, so access now comes off of Stream Walkway. There's a stream crossing made, but all those lots were designated back in nineteen ninety-two for development in return for millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure, were approved in ninety-two, were approved through two thousand and fifteen, recorded in part, and we believe it was unfair and a travesty, manifest injustice to take that away simply with the stroke of a pen to take away those thirteen lots. Similarly, that was another piece of property, which we call Phase Two of the growth allocation area.
You have thirty seconds left, sir.
Thank you, sir. There's approximately five to eight lots there. Those similarly were approved in nineteen ninety-two pursuant to the RPC plan. That is a public-private partnership that was engaged in between the town and the developer. Developers spent millions and millions of dollars on the infrastructure to benefit the town, create those homes. That development, you know, while we look back today and perhaps perhaps say, well, that's, that's enough, okay? But we're just saying, give us what you promised to give us back in nineteen ninety-two to finish the community. It's part of your general plan. There's inconsistency between the plan and what's proposed, and we're just asking that you give us the, the zoning that we need. If you don't, that would be tremendous injustice. I would also note this.
Your time is well over, sir.
Sixty-three percent of the land in Richfield Station is preserved in conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make a comment on this? Please do, sir.
Hello. My name's Peter Shin. I reside at seventy-eight thirty-five Eagle Blue Drive. And first of all, thank you very much for doing this work. It's such difficult work that you people do to maintain the balance between a community that obviously where economic growth is a priority to, to address the concerns of these gentlemen, economic growth certainly important. I'm for economic growth in a, in a general sense, and yet, having to balance that with not trying to create a community such that people don't want, no longer enjoy living here. You know, that balance, where you want to have that growth, but you don't want to destroy the essence of the community that brought you here in the first place. So that having been said, and I'm super sympathetic to that, normal life's asset or property seizure, however, I would say that the climate's a little bit different in nineteen ninety-two than it is now, than it was in nineteen ninety-two. And we can't be tied to a hidebound view of the past, given the challenges that we face in the future. And that being said, I believe that you've come to the conclusions that these ordinances and that these zoning changes need to happen. And I trust in your august judgment that you have done the right thing. And for that reason, I strongly support Greta and the other members who have shown up from Richfield Station tonight. So thank you.
Thank you for testifying, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to testify at this time?
Eric Blitz, on behalf of the Rodden Reel. I just want to address what the gentleman just brought up, just so that the public As described in the comprehensive plan that you just passed in April, Chesapeake Beach had the lowest growth rate for the last decade than any decade since nineteen sixty. You are not growing. This plan will shut down all growth. It's just going to lock it down because the details, when you get into the details of the what they do on height, dimension requirements, nobody's going to be, it's not going to be economical to build. And I feel sorry for the people that detrimentally relied upon the plans that this town has had for fifty years. You can't shut the gates.
Thank you for your comments, sir. At this time, is there anybody else who, who wishes to speak? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
And, and the ayes have it. At this time, I'm going to begin the regular portion of our, of our meeting. Let the record read that the entire council, to include the mayor, are, are present. And as always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, to the Republic, where it stands, foundation, under God, and the people, the ready justice for all.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, approval of the minutes of the October twentieth Town Council meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the November seventh special meeting.
Move to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the November seventh informational work session.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, we have a special presentation that, we don't have a presentation. Okay, skip that. Town administrators a report, the council seat, is there anything outstanding that you'd like to, I'll mention it front, and then we'll...
Thanks, ma'am. Not outstanding necessarily, but I did want to recognize Dennis Berger, he's our new code enforcement officer. He provided his first report to Town Council last month. But I did want to point out that Dennis has actually been with the town for four years, doing a really great job in the Public Works Department. And so just wanted to recognize Dennis. He's making some great strides in his new role with code enforcement, but he is also continuing his duties in Public Works, managing asset inventory, roads, and equipment as well. So thank you so much, Dennis, for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've read Holly's report, beginning with, with Councilwoman Hartman. We have any, any comments for Holly?
Hey, hi. I have one question. On the replacement lights for kellums, will they have any difference in terms of light diffusion or direction? So regarding, you know, light push and up, down, will there be any disturbance of the neighborhood with new lights? Go ahead, Jay.
I can, I can share a study that we did with the lumens and direction. So it'd actually be more focused in LED instead of high-pressure sodium, so it's actually going to be more directional and not as, we call wasted light, flooded light.
Very good, thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On page two of the report, under section five, infrastructure projects, just a question, there's a comment, or that first item, where you're talking about towns working through the process to prepare for feasibility study in the location per priority set by the Town Council. I know we've had discussions about our priorities, but I don't remember those ever being finalized or shared back to the council. Is there a plan to do that?
Yes, so we had talked about doing that in, in December, but this was that safe crossing that Town Council had, in our work session, had all discussed was a top priority. So Wayne in his firm is actually working through that feasibility study, so that we can apply for funding with the state, basically.
All right, thank you. And then just on the, about the LED lights, I think that's great. I brought this up before in terms of doing a, documenting our carbon footprint for the town. I think we're missing an opportunity by not doing that so that we can have an opp, a chance to highlight the progress that we're making, because we don't really know where we're starting. We're just kind of making changes here, changes there, which I think are great, but, but we've never really taken an inventory of where we are. And I was just kind of hoping we could do that.
So I, I have connected with Sustainable Maryland's group at University of Maryland, Environmental Finance, and they are planning to do that for the town for free. So I still have that on track, so we're, we are moving forward.
Excellent, thank you so much. Then on page three, under the Bayfront Park, I was just wondering if we can take steps to make that a permanent, since the Bayfront Park remains closed to the general public, and just kind of hoping we, as a council, might move that forward in the, in the near future, just.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thanks, that's all I have.
Mars?
No questions, thank you.
A couple of questions on the water reclamation treatment plant launder covers noted here discussed with the partners. Any comments from the partners?
They didn't have any concerns. We did review the bid submission. We told them we were looking for some cost-saving measures, but no concerns.
Very good. And then the safer routes to school, any idea of updated schedule for that?
Yes, we've, Dwayne and I have been coordinating with the state several times this week already, so we have a couple of things in progress. I would say we are hopefully within a week and a half from hopefully giving, being able to get the RFP out and approved from the state.
And then just for the record, my understanding is the dredging is done, correct?
No.
No?
Aye.
I thought they had to be done by the fifteenth.
Of December.
No, November.
I don't, I think that was the window for out actually in the bay.
Yes.
It's different once you pass the jetty walls. But I think they have a week to ten days left, weather permitting.
Thank you. And then just again, the last one I have is on the sidewalk around two sixty-one, Jaworski Memorial Walkway. Any idea of the schedule for that?
For the hundred percent design?
Yeah. Feasibility study of this location.
The feasibility, go ahead, Wayne.
So we are working with the Maryland Department of the Environment and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a pre-submitting meeting that is scheduled for the first, first week of December. We have an alignment which is completed, and we're going to review that with them at, at that time and get their take on it. State Highway has come back and said they will not allow it in their right-of-way, so it's going to have to go outside the right-of-way.
Actually, it's probably just as good as we get outside the right-of-way. That way we only have to deal with DNR and not DNR and SHA, so.
Correct.
If I can do anything to help with that, please let me know. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Frank? Yes, I just want to follow up on that, that particular project. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Holly, we applied for funding for a feasibility study. We did, we're not turned down specifically, we were supported, but we were not given the award due to other priorities coming first. Is that correct? So we, we have, so we need to go back around again. So is there a deadline for the feasibility study being done so that we don't miss a round of grant funding? Does that question make sense?
Yes, it does. And I, from when the grant is required, I think we will meet that deadline to, to submit the feasibility study.
Okay. That's great. And then, so you said you have a meeting on December fifth?
That was a tentative date given, yes. It's, it's scheduled the first week of December, is what I just received last week.
Okay.
Waiting for a final date, but they're projecting December fifth.
Okay. I guess I have nothing further at this time. That's great progress. Love to be at that December, that December meeting if it's appropriate and possible as an observer. I promise I won't talk.
You bring cookies.
I'll bring, if it's early in the morning, I'll bring coffee. You know I'm good for that. So let me know, but thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I also had a similar question regarding our partners meeting in the water reclamation treatment plant. So I'm glad to hear that they're in agreement. And was the idea of the headworks brought up at all because that would be a future expense that's quite large?
Yes, that's very conceptual at this point, so we're, we're not in any position to even have cost estimate estimating for that project yet, but yes, it was discussed.
Okay, and once again, you know, the request will be when the town comes to do budgeting, that we have a line item that starts setting money aside in our utility fund to cover that cost so we don't have a bond, you know, of some sort, because it will be expensive. And then I know that the green team would be interested in reviewing that landscape RFP when it comes up, and we know about that. I had that question about priorities also, so we'll get that list in December. Oh, and one other thing, on the public vote ramps. I was really happy to read that DNR expressed appreciation for the Town Council's desire to eliminate fees at the ramps for the state of Maryland voters. That was nice to read. That seems to have worked out well so far. So those were my comments.
Okay, Operations Manager report, I believe we're very fortunate that we're going to hear from Carla. We've read Carla's report, and if we, we can get her online here, we'll be able to ask her that while we're looking at her. So what's happening?
If there's any questions for Carla, you can let me know.
Okay. She, as we all know, Carla's still out on maternity leave, she's a new mom, and I'm going to guess something's going on at home.
Just one thing for the record to put out there, there's an attachment here that talks about activities, upcoming activities. And just for the record, the CBRM holiday lights trolley shows on this as December seventeenth. It is now scheduled for December tenth.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Larry. Okay, we've read Carla's report. If, do we have any questions or comments for her? I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Nothing, just looking forward to Light Up the Town.
Right. I have no, I have no questions either. I want to emphasize that. I, I probably should save this for the lightning round, I'll probably repeat it there. Light Up the Town is a, is a neat event. Last year was a real neat event. You got vendors coming back. You got vendors coming back. We want to support those local vendors. Pretty sure Jay's going to build a fire. And it's just a, it's just a neat event. So I encourage people to come out for that.
Thank you, sir.
No additional questions.
All righty.
None for me, sir.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, very good. Public Works Report. We have read Jay's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
Great. Thanks, Jay. All right, I have a question on the emergency calls, the last item on your list. So they had the two low levels at the Chesapeake Village Water Tower. What causes that and who knew?
Our SCADA system calls out when the elevation is. So it's controlled locally, but it calls out if it gets below. So we have a variable frequency we drive there. We've had some issues with some power issues. We've resolved them, but basically the pump was too smart to turn on because it had some discrepancies, but we were able to zero it out. It was a technical issue. But if it doesn't come on and the level drops, we get a call and make sure we can address it before we run low on water.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's it.
No questions. Thanks. No questions for Mr. Berry. Thank you.
Jay, just my usual question, any update on the clock along 260 in St. Andrew?
It's due in late December and it's going to take us about two days. We're going to change the footer bolt pattern a little. So once we get it in, right now it's scheduled for late December.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I have one question about, I mean, it's not on here, which is the walkway on the east, sorry, on the west side of 261 on the south side of town. So first of all, that's all done. It looks fantastic. Huge improvement. Well done. I know that this question has been answered, but right now it really escapes me. Why did we choose wood instead of Trex? Because I know we've been replacing a lot of other sections with Trex. So you know the question. Just curious.
Sure. And believe me, I'd rather have composite. Due to the, so every other boardwalk in town is level. And due to the grade there, the composite, it's the friction and the slip factor. So, and I actually had two manufacturers come out that had a different thing, but we don't want to change what state highway built. We will have slips and falls because it frost. It's bad enough when it's wood. So the one thing different than when state highway built it for the town is that was just your ace hardware marine grade. We did pay upfront and we got triple dip marine grade planking that should last about three times as long as the original. Is that answered?
Yeah, I mean, frankly, it looks great. So I'm, you know.
I'm hoping it lasts.
But your answer there is it's a liability and safety issue.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I just have one on the report either. It's regarding Veterans Park. So how's everything going over there?
The contractor finished most of their work. You can see the blue. I'll have to share a video. So we, this time, instead of just painting on top of paint, we actually sand blasted it down to the original concrete. And there were some blemishes and different things that they've done. It's a two-part epoxy. There's a lot of cracks and stuff that are in Veterans Park that they were able to fix. I'm hoping this application lasts longer. But the blue marks that are on there now, the last coat of paint has to be above 50 degrees. And they've already met with me, actually, we met today. And they might contain the fountain in a bubble and be able to paint it. But I told them, let's just wait, see what we got the first part of next week. It looks like it'll get above 50. But once they do that, it's, it should be done.
And then we're going to wait to run the fountain until the spring, correct?
Correct. At this point, I'm not going to fill the fountain. You know, and that was going to be on the NMI report. I was going to remind everyone, this is the weekend to unhook your hose outside, even if you have a frost-free bib. It's supposed to be 27 Sunday night and Saturday night. So I think we're just, and we have to do a little work to the fountain in the back too, to be ready for the spring. But in the spring, it'll look good.
Thank you for the update. That's everything.
Thank you, sir. Okay, water reclamation treatment plant report. We've read Josh's report. If we do have any questions, I'll begin with the good councilwoman.
Sure. Really, I read through it and I have only one thing. And that's congratulate Dave on his license.
As I long to.
Yes, it's welcome aboard and he's doing great. And y'all are doing just great. So thank you.
Sir?
All right, I was a little behind because I just made a to-do item to drain my hose bibs. Wow, where do I start on the water reclamation report? I think I'm just going to yield my time to Councilman Jaworski.
Very well. Sir?
He never tires of doing that. I also wanted to just congratulate Dave on completing his training. Again, as usual, noting no SSOs or bypasses. And then just a follow-up question, any update on testing of the bio solids for PFAS?
We just got the sample back yesterday and I'm going through, looking at the data.
Thank you.
Commandee on another detailed report, Josh. Thank you. No additional comments? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my comment is congratulations to Dave on his new license.
As I long to.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a happy Thanksgiving. Okay, code enforcement report, which we've read Dennis's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
I have no questions. Thank you very much.
No questions? Thank you.
Morris?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I know that there's been discussions lately about trash and animals eating food and things like that. And it's important that the community put their trash in receptacles. I know that the rule is with a lid and I know that was kind of emphasized in some of the heat blasts we've had recently. Sometimes we've got overflow garbage too. I would encourage the, I've been encouraging town hall to be more vigilant in enforcing those data ordinance. That's important, especially in the warm months through the summer. But I would also encourage the town to perhaps issue warnings. I think a warning is probably sufficient in a lot of cases.
Absolutely.
So that was it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Really no questions other than congratulations and condolences on your new position.
Thank you.
I have nothing. Thanks.
It's really just an observation I noticed and I counted them up. I think there are nine different instances on this report of failure to obtain a rental license. Is that becoming problematic?
For certain individuals, yes. We are working right now with Holly and Fran currently. There's one particular individual and we are probably going to have to move forward with citations and possible court.
But that's only one case out of these, right?
They're actually, if you look at it, they're all the same person, but just different properties. Yep.
I was just starting to notice the failure to obtain just started counting, you know? Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the town treasurer's report. I believe Brittany's. Okay, we've read Brittany's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Hi, Brittany. Just one question and thank you for providing the CPA reports. I appreciate it. On the FY '22 audit results, last bullet point, it talks about long-term obligations totaling $4.3 million. Is it fair to say that all of these are related to the utility fund?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, that is true.
Okay, so this would be our long-term bond indebtedness regarding really E and R and those upgrades. I understand. And what can we attribute? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just confirming, yes, it's correct.
Okay. In that same bullet point, it says a decrease of $508,000 from fiscal year '21. What are those savings attributable to?
That was just the principal that we paid down as part of our, our schedule, our, our schedule to pay off our loans, our debt schedule.
Okay, I understand. So it's just basically a decrease associated with our payments. I wasn't sure exactly what that was. Okay, thank you for describing it. And that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, thank you.
Yeah, hey, Brittany, how you doing? This just looks great. I mean, I don't have any questions, but I feel, you know, it just deserves a little bit of a, you know, round of applause or something. So well done to you and the rest of the administration.
Thank you. Councilman?
No questions. Job, no questions. Job well done, Brittany. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Healthy report. Kudos to town hall and everybody that's involved. Been decent, if not exceptional stewardship. So no questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great report and no additional questions. Thanks.
Excellent report. Congratulations on the audit results to date. I mean, as of reading this, they all looked very positive. I have a general question on the audit results for the liabilities and such. I don't, didn't have the budget in front of me. Is this in line with what we thought was going to have it in with the budget or better or worse?
In terms of the comparison of our budget?
Correct.
I mean, I think, I think just in general, it's we, we project that the budget will just be accurate for what it is. But it's very much in line with how the predictions of the revenue stream is right now.
Right, very good. Thank you.
You can, yes.
Thank you. Brittany, Councilman Morris again. I didn't see it mentioned in the report, but have we taken in any ARPA funds yet?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, about how much? We've actually announced this publicly a few times. You can answer the question.
Close to $6 million. Brittany, Brittany, did you want to verify the actual number that we've received to date of ARPA funds?
I will, yes, just give me one second. I want to have the exact amount.
You have a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Brittany. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Town engineers report. We have read Wayne's report. If we have any questions, beginning with Councilwoman Hartman.
No questions, Wayne. Thank you very much.
No questions. Thank you.
Morris?
I apologize. We're with Wayne. Wayne, how are you? Kellums Field. I see your comments making adjustments for a final concept approval. I know you were incorporating some other parts to that. I wouldn't necessarily say that the next version is going to be the final version. What I'd like to, what I'd like to see would be a second blush draft. And what is the progress on that?
We have worked with the vendor for the totlot equipment. We have a final layout. We are actually expecting final bids tomorrow. And if I receive that, I can then update the entire master plan for you, to send that over to you. Once that is complete, I'd like the committee and the council to take a look at it or your office to take a look at it and confirm that's where we want to go. And we can put the totlot portion out to bid. The storm drain work is still working through its permitting process, which you'll see in the report. And the remainder of the Phase 1, we'll call it, or the master plan we looked at, once I have those, that totlot complete, I will send you a final version based on the comments we had last time.
What are the prospects of us having that delivered to council by the middle of January?
Very good.
Because what I'd like to see would be, once we get that second blush draft, it might be an appropriate time to have a short demonstration and introduce the council to what we've been working on there. And shortly after that, I'd like to have a public meeting with the Kellums Committee and certainly invite additional criticism and constructive comments to that. And also invite our government committees. I know I had met with the Green Team a little earlier, a little later last month, I believe. There's, I think there's another couple of rounds of some comments and trying to just pull things in to get a little better focus on what Kellums can be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure.
Question on the water reclamation plant headworks. It says the design RFP is ready for bidding. Any idea of the schedule for that?
It can go out, Holly and I just have to finish final documents. It can go out at any time. We're ready.
Okay. And we'll have a normal 45-day bid period?
It'll be about a 45-day bid period, yes.
Okay. And then just a clarification on the next item, just it says Route 216. It's Route 261. And again, if there's anything I can do to help with that, give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go to Route 216. Much safer.
A couple, couple things. Just I want to wind back, second to what Councilman Morris was asking about. I was a little confused here. It seems like the sentence, making adjustments for final concept approval, once the totlot design is complete, and then you go on and talk about the totlot. But that sentence, there, you're talking about the overall master plan.
Yeah, so there's, there's the totlot detailed design, which is basically complete. I'm waiting for final documents tomorrow from the rec folks. Once that's complete, I will prepare an overall master plan of the entire facility as we looked at the last time. I will update it based on that and we'll have something for you to look at.
And then just, I just want to echo from what Councilman Morris said. It'd be great to see that and it will be very exciting to get it in front of the public. For sure. Okay, two questions on the pocket parks. Bear with me. The asphalt, I think, Jay, you're going to tell me that we really wanted asphalt because of washout and that's really the best surface for maintainability. Am I right about that?
Probably, but which specific park?
I'm sorry, I'm talking specifically about the connector from Kellums to E Street. And so in the plans that, in the plans that we got there that specifically labeled asphalt, we had talked about something permeable, but I think you kind of, I know you talked about it with some of the master plan conversations. I'm assuming it's true there too.
That was just my opinion, have something, not necessarily asphalt, could be concrete, even stamped concrete, something that looks aesthetically nice, but versus gravel or mulch going through that area.
Okay, so I guess that's also important for ADA reasons that we would need that there. If it is what it is, it's a short stretch. I hate to see more asphalt, but maybe that's what it needs to be. Okay, and then on the overlooked designs that you did, are we, what's the next step there? Are we going to have a conversation about that? I think overall, Peggy and I have talked about it with walkability folks. It's exciting, but there are some opportunities maybe to make some small tweaks. I don't think this is probably the form for that, but what, how do we, what do we do next there?
I can follow up with you, and we can, we can talk about that and make sure we're incorporated into the scope of work, because the next step would be to get that out to bid and start those projects. So if there's some final tweaks, we can definitely work through that.
And the last thing I want to do is hold that up. So let's talk as soon as we can. All right. Thank you.
Hi there. My first question is on the dredge. So we're dredging. The material's going into the dredge spoil site, and we currently have no plans to remove it. Says no haul off is planned.
So that comment was in reference to when the contractor came on site, he said to the town, we're going to be moving this material around. If you'd like to haul it off, bring me some trucks, and we'll load them for free. That is what that was in reference to. We're not going to be hauling off additional material at this time. There will be a haul off in the future, once it's cured, but it was just an offer that he made at that time.
Okay. I just didn't understand, because we normally, at some level, dispose of some of the dredge material elsewhere, else we would never have room for more.
Correct. There will be a day we have to do it again, but that's what I was referring to.
Okay. Regarding the Kellums, I fully support Greg's idea, the more information that we can have out to not only all of Town Council, but also, you know, to the public, the sooner the better, you know, presentations, whatever, so that they can see the full concept and then therefore, you know, provide comments. I think that'd be great. And thank you for trying to reduce the cost. On the water park, it's one of our larger expenses in town in many ways. And so it says that a 3D model of the existing conditions has, has been complete. Is there, and this is just a question to think about or ponder, is there a way that you could present, since it is such an expense, some of the results from that 3D modeling, whether it be a shortened video, a map, images, in a one or two-minute video that could be put on our website, or something that would, we could play at a Town Council meeting, as we often do presentations, something that really shows our level of investment in that place, and then some of the potential future costs. And I think those sorts of 3D images are worth a lot. So it's just something to consider.
Thank you.
Other than that, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Deputies' report. I believe we had the sergeant here. We've read his report, beginning with Councilwoman Bodine. Do we have any questions of the sergeant?
No, I reviewed the report. Just thank you for your service. Y'all keep safe, and I thank you again.
Yeah. Good evening, as always. Thank you for your service. I just had a question about the tire slashing. You know, I remember when this was going on up in North Beach. Do you have any sense about this and what the, you know, is this just kids, or is something more serious, or?
It looks like the two might be associated, because they're in the same area, but the other one, we know the suspect, and that's, they're known suspect and victim are known to each other, so that's isolated.
Okay.
But the other two seem to be related, but we don't, we don't know 100%. They're still under investigation right now.
All right. Thank you. No questions. Just stay safe.
Morris?
Yeah. Just some obvious observations. First was recovered. Police stole some tow company signs. Handicap placard was stolen from an unlocked vehicle. Couple of different married couples assaulting each other. I'd say Town of Chesapeake Beach is a pretty safe place. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
No further questions. Stay safe.
And thank you, sir. Stay safe. Have a, have a great Thanksgiving. Okay. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, we've read the report. As always, if we have any questions, just, you know, send them over to Larry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one thing to add to the report. Santa Claus is going to be moving around town on the fire truck, scheduled to be announced soon, so stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the mayor's report. Great news for everybody. First, I want to highlight the findings of the, of the audit of the town. The town is in strong financial position. Our assets exceed our liabilities by almost $50 million. This past fiscal year, we saw a net position increase of $4 million while decreasing our town debt by a half a million dollars. The town's in great shape. Matter of fact, anybody tells you the town is in great shape and will remain in great shape moving forward. How did all this happen during a recession? The credit goes to three prongs. The town administration and staff, the fiscally prudent Town Council that always keeps focused on providing world-class services to our restaurants, and of course, the town citizens. Without your support and encouragement, all this good news will not be possible. So I think on behalf of the council, we do thank the citizens, and we do thank the town staff, and great, great, great work, you know. Just wanted to mention some election results, if you will. It's no secret that I'm engaged with our federal, state, and county leaders. In my opinion, the Town of Chesapeake Beach fared very well in this past election. We are a nonpartisan government, and it seems to me that all the candidates that were elected will serve our town well, both parties, Democrats and Republicans who were elected. I'm going to announce the names of those, and, and these are the folks who I work with to bring resources and grants to our town. Senator Chris Van Hollen, Congressman Steny Hoyer, newly-elected Governor Moore, Senator Michael Jackson, Delegate Jeff Long, County Commissioners, President Buddy Hans, Mark Cox, Catherine Grasso, Mike Hart, Todd Ireland, who clearly has the best last name of that whole group, and we have a new sheriff in Ricky Cox. And I must announce that I just found out hours ago that with the, with the counting of the mail-in ballots, Margaret Phipps did win her election. So she has served 45 years, and I was so saddened when I thought that wasn't, you know, going to happen, but yes, so very good news. So as I said before, the future is bright for Chesapeake Beach. Next, we're going to move on to resolutions and ordinances. First, there'll be a vote on ordinance O-22-12, an ordinance to the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, amending Chapter 290 of the zoning ordinance. I will begin discussion from the, after we get a motion to approve, and a second, I'll begin our discussion with Councilwoman Bodine. I would ask that the council, you know, you comment on the ordinance, then, you know, you can end your comments if you do happen to have an amendment. That sound about right? Okay. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Madam?
Yes, I'd like to make the, I've discussed this ad nauseam with everyone. I reached out to all the Town Council individually, and I think my rationale's been said many times. I think overall, the comprehensive plan was extremely well-done. I think that these text amendments reflect the work that the Planning and Zoning Commission has done. And saying that, without repeating myself over and over and over again, I think the crowning achievement of this comprehensive plan will be a 35-foot height limit, for a variety of reasons. So saying that, I will make an amendment that reads as follows. I move to amend Ordinance O-22-12 as follows. Add the word "average" prior to the word "normal," and striking the words from "act" through "building." The amended wording for building height would be, "A building's height shall be measured by the average, normal, per rent, not elevated finish, lock grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roofline, which shall include rooftop deck, fence railing, or other rooftop additions."
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Before I begin the discussion, which I will start with the maker of the motion, the town attorney, I believe, would like to weigh in on this before we go any further.
You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was given to me to review the application. So one thing that concerned me, and obviously people, you know, as a staff person, it passes, but no, whenever an ordinance is passed, it needs not be updated, not only in the language, but also the application. So what concerned me was the average, speaking of the average as far as the topography of the land, would that be for the entire lot, or for the front of a lot, because I fully understood the exact word it would be. And then if it was for an entire lot, you know, every lot is, it has serpents, holes, and holes, and things like that. How detailed the topography was expected to have to create that average in going through, as opposed to size of lot, which also would create that type of average. The expense that the town would have to go through as far as to create that topography for a particular lot to create that average number. It just concerned me, because with regard to reading it as it is right now, how that language would create it above that average, how the topography would be read, whether holes or holes, whether sloughs, how all of that would be, you know, anchored into, to set that average for the front of the, of the, of the, so that's what concerned me in reading it. So I just wanted to address that.
Right. And if you will, my, my question to the councilwoman is, if you, if you, if you choose to withdraw your motion and, and then, you know, make another one that enhances it, that's, you have that option right now to do, I want to give you that, that choice. Obviously, we would ask for the second to be there, but I want to give you all that option, either to, to comment on this, or if you want to withdraw it and make an amendment, that's your option, too. So the floor is yours, madam.
Thank you. I understand your concern. First of all, I would not anticipate that being an expense paid for by the town, but the personal property owner, number one. Number two, the way it originally read at the primary front entrance to the building, one can take my house as an example. We consider my husband and I, our front door to be on C Street, however, our address is on Bayside Road. And so who decides where the front door is? And that's why I had a problem with that originally. At the front door could lead to someone having a series of steps, five steps, 10 steps, 15 steps, who knows? And so it added ambiguity in the, in that context. That's why I wanted to remove "at the primary front entrance." When it comes to the average, normal, not elevated finish lot, like I said, I, no way would I expect that to be a town expense whatsoever. That ought to be the builder's expense. And this would allow for any unevenness within that property. If one builds on a slope, we already have some slope lots in town. You can think of some of the lots that are on, for example, in Bayview Hills. And this would allow for that averaging out so that, for example, or Chesapeake Station, where the lots are a basement coming down to a garage, like this, a hill, and then you have a front door that's up. So what this does, and my whole goal here, is to remove ambiguity, make it simple to understand. And I think a building's height shall be measured by the average normal is about as simple as one can make it. And if conditions or understandings need to be added, I think in time, as people put forth their plans, we'll see whether or not it needs to be adjusted, but right now, I don't think it needs to be adjusted. I think it applies throughout the town and for all types of topographical parcels, by having the word "average" in there.
And thank you. If you, I will continue with the process unless you care to make another statement, Mr. Counselor.
Oh, maybe not, no, no.
Okay. He just made a statement. Okay. So we have a, we have an amendment. Thank you. And we have a second. We've had discussion from the maker of the motion. I'll go around the horn, as I like to say. Councilman Fink?
Well, it's a couple things. I guess my first is a question of procedure, because there are potentially other amendments to this very wording. So how does that play in?
If I, if you could, I'm going to go back to what I originally asked the council to do. Could you comment on the ordinance? And then, well, I'm sorry, we have an amended ordinance now. I apologize. Continue, please.
So I guess I'm still, if it's appropriate, I'm still looking for an answer to that question. How is that, how could possible future amendments play into what I'm commenting on right now?
We just take it one at a time.
So then, specifically to the amendment proposed by Councilwoman Bodine, I think that I respect removing ambiguity. I prefer the wording that's here, because I think it allows homeowners to have the flexibility to deal with sea level rise and other issues, and so I'm comfortable with that. Adding specificity about how far the primary front entrance can be above grade and potentially designating the front entrance, these are reasonable levels of specificity that could be added, but I prefer the wording as it is not, not be striked entirely. That's my comment on the amendment. I wanted to get clarification on two other things in the document. Can I do that now?
On the ordinance?
On the ordinance.
Yes, please do.
Okay. So the first is, I wanted to confirm that the changes, that the minimum lot size now, as it reads in this document, essentially goes back to what the comprehensive plan proposed. Do I have that correct?
Yes.
I think I'm going to leave it at that. So for now, that's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. When the ordinance and the amendment, in whatever order you want.
Over the many months that we've been discussing this, I've expressed a number of concerns about items that are in not only the master, the comprehensive plan, but the ordinances that we're considering tonight. Not all of them are being addressed. My biggest concern has to do with appropriate economic development in the town, as was mentioned by one of the residents. But given tonight's discussion, I'll limit those comments to a couple things, and one is, to my colleague, Dr. Boldine, I do have issues with your proposed amendment, coming from the perspective of the Climate Change Advisory Group, and encouraging people to take steps to protect their property from sea level rise in the future. And indeed, the motion that I intend to introduce would, what the right word would be, contradict, I think, the amendment that you're proposing. So I understand, we'll wait for that, but I'm just saying that the amendment I'm going to, is contradictory to what's in this amendment. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I really want to add, and I'll be commenting on all amendments, is basically, I believe that in contradiction to the councilwoman, that the wording as it introduces does measure from the ground, not the front door, just to be, you may know that, but just to be clear. Okay. All righty. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. I'll comment on the amendment first, and then I've got a little more to say about the overall plan and the text amendments. Todd's asking some good questions there. I could be convinced to accept the language as it's written. I'm a builder, and it had been changed from what it was before, but I'm certainly willing to err on the side of less ambiguity. The questions that Todd brought up, those are excellent questions. You can make an average from a whole lot, and if he did that, my property, you know, my house might be 10 foot tall, because I fall off on the back. I would just suggest you could change that amendment to be the measured average at the street frontage, the address, street frontage there. Regarding the comprehensive plan, the document that's before us tonight is mostly in keeping with what was delivered to us by our Planning and Zoning Commission. It's my understanding that little has changed from that document to the time it was presented to us. I do want to mention that I was unaware of the minor change that Mr. Blitch did present earlier this evening. The public hearings, for those who've been involved, and like many, many of us have, the public hearings and the public outreach have spoken loudly against development that's affecting small town, as well as changes to open space definitions. And I feel that the amendments meet the public's expectation without shutting the door to development. Because the Town of Chesapeake Beach is indeed open for business, and it is in keeping with its slogan despite some loud criticism to the contrary. Our businesses welcome as many visitors as they can, and there's plenty of opportunities in town for development. There seemed to be some last-minute controversy and anxiety surrounding what the definition of a heightened structure ought to be. Seems pretty simple to me. It's from the ground to the top. And again, speaking to the amendment, I'm in favor of removing any ambiguity there, because there is, there exists a great deal of anxiety over what Town Hall's intentions are with this. The, I want to touch base on a couple of the changes to the document that occurred after it was delivered to us by the Planning Commission. The matter about changing back the minimum square footage lot size from what Planning and Zoning had put forth was something that the mayor had initiated. It was originally aimed at limiting, the Planning and Zoning change was originally aimed at limiting density, but I'm in support of that change in the document, as it provides some balance and some wiggle room for property owners. There's some balance there. The table changes is another item that was changed. There's, that's the use, the permitted use table. The table changes from what was provided from Planning and Zoning were initiated by the mayor, with the help from the planning director, who is not with us tonight. The only use changes, however, made, it's my understanding, were all towards not permitted. That's conservative. And if we're And if we're in on the side of caution, that's a win for small town, in my opinion. That doesn't mean there's errors, and there's some things that maybe the council could be approached with on a case-by-case basis, or the Planning Commission, I should say. But those changes were intended to clean up some things so that it was more in keeping with the plan's text, and I'm in favor of those changes. I did want to point out, you know, we're all aware of proposed development, some different things that are out there, and people, I'm not against development, I'm a builder myself. I did want to single out the old Stenit site that used to be a restaurant. Now the property owner wants to build some townhomes there, and he should be allowed to do that. Some of the key changes in the document should prohibit proposed residential condominiums squarely placed on Fishing Creek at the bridge. And when I say that, that's the residential condominiums. Much of it applied for at the Kellum's side. In my opinion, it's a big win for those who are in favor of small town, and is attributed to a very strong community turnout in opposition to this type of development. And I can't underscore that enough because I, Mr. Mayor, had, they had called a, an additional public hearing for Planning and Zoning at the end of, towards the end of the process. And I have to say, I certainly wasn't warm about that after all the meetings and public hearings that we've been through. We've been through a lot of meetings, we've watched through a lot of stuff. And I attended that meeting in person, and there was a very, very strong public turnout against large development in town. And it's just, it's impossible to ignore that. However, we can't be all or nothing with things either. We've got to find some balance in here for everybody. We've all done our best to do more than just notice everything that's gone into drafting these changes. Several years behind us and a lot of work ahead of us. It's appropriate, again, to commend our committed and devoted volunteers, past and present, who again have advanced our efforts in governance. I've attended and watched a lot of planning and outreach meetings, held a town hall, held at local businesses. We've taken, some of us have taken trips and educational trips to other small towns, and we have dutifully watched and listened as we've learned as much as we could to be the best shepherds that we can be. With these initial laws, I feel concerned residents should be happy. Efficacy of these amendments, these text amendments before us tonight have been a concern of mine. The power in them to cause the intended effect, what is built will be a testimony to our altruism. If any of the code changes were to be blatantly and simply overturned by an appeals board not familiar with any planning and zoning training, that would be telling to me. Because what's actually going to be built will be the testament of these changes in code and the shepherding received from our planning director, muting the influences of for-profit entities. There are parts of the, there are parts of the ordinance that I don't like. And there are probably parts of the ordinance that everybody in this room doesn't like. And that's probably a good thing because that probably means there's some balance in there somewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Partik, if you don't mind, I had some comments on the ordinance as a whole that I forgot to do while I was there. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. This is on the ordinance as a whole. I want to recognize and applaud the hard work and dedication of the members of the Planning and Zoning Board, current and past. Through many long hours and years of work, the Planning Commission held true to their vision of protecting natural resources, increasing open space, recognizing the threats to our coastal community, and preserving the small-town charm of Chesapeake Beach for many years to come. These ordinances are a product of that work and a consensus of the town council with an eye towards compromise. While some of our work require mutual concessions, it also served as a means of collaboration towards common goals. We have before as a product that all seven of us can be proud of. The changes before us formalize, one, the protection of hundreds of acres of natural resources. Two, the protection of the character of our small town. Three, the recognition of the need for coastal resiliency. And four, action to limit development in our most fragile locations. Importantly, this work also includes great strides to create vibrancy for small businesses and increased open space for wellness and community gathering. I conclude by thanking our town citizens for their participation in this process, as well as the town staff for all the hours that they dedicated to us. Thank you, and thank you, sir. If you don't mind, Mr. Partik.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So hard to follow you and Councilwoman Morris.
Just what he said.
Yeah, exactly, ditto. No, but I do think, yes, a lot of effort and input has been sought and given on this ordinance. And, and I think the majority of our residents have spoken in favor of what is in here. I'm sure, as has already been said, there's something in here for everyone to not like, but I think the majority of things, the majority of people do like. And, and so I am in favor of this ordinance. And with respect to the proposed amendment, a couple of questions. One, I agree in terms of removing ambiguity, and I feel like we've had an example of that ambiguity already tonight, when there was a reference to, that was put in there, so there was an opportunity for folks to raise the height. And I said, well, if that's the purpose, there should be something that says that. It shouldn't be this ambiguous phrase that says at the primary front entrance of the building. It should reference the, I think it's already was said, the, the street front of the building or something to that effect, rather than a door or a front entrance. With respect to average, I can see that, that seemed to try to remove ambiguity, but I'm kind of like, well, what's the normal? What does normal mean in here? That's ambiguous to me as well. So anyway, with that.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Just another moment on the ambiguity. To Dr. Bodine's comment for amendment, I thought it was better until I heard our legal representatives talk about the ambiguities of the new words. So I've just come to the conclusion it is ambiguous on both sides, and I would probably leave it as is, except I would like to know, to Councilman Partik's words, that it's to the street front, not to a door, because that is confusing. To Mr. Blitz's comment on the bullet from the marine commercial, I looked at that and, no?
Well, we're commenting on the, commenting on the amendment now. New ordinance as a whole, not public, not public.
Right, right. But I think it's in there.
You're going to tie it in, that's wonderful.
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay.
Tell me when I didn't. I would think that it was in there in the text for looking for non-residential uses, so that I hope that it's also covered, the businesses, because it's non-residential, commercial and recreation uses of the waterfront is water businesses. So I hope that it would be covered in there because we certainly still want boats, et cetera, you know, in Chesapeake Beach and on the bay. And considering the different uses, especially the resource conservation and the changes of building and possibly changes from what we were doing in 1992, we have seen in the last decades, a number of issues where water running downhill because everything on the top of the hill has been made impermeable, causes a lot of flooding along the way in different ways, in terms of gouging out landscape where there is actual dirt, and in terms of flooding towns and basements below. So that's one of the things that we, I feel that we need to look at now, is how do we continue to include permeable surfaces throughout the town so that we don't have flooding issues as they've had in North Beach, you know, quite a bit over these years at the bottoms of their hills? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, we have a motion to amend.
Mr. Mayor, procedural question. Would it, would it be helpful to my colleagues if I were to introduce?
No.
And it's hard to vote on amendment when they don't know what's coming.
I think they know what's coming because you gave them a copy. The thing is, we're going to vote on one amendment at a time. That's the way it's supposed to be.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
There seems to have been a little bit of concurrence on removing the word "average", and I just have a question. There was another phrase that was used, which was "street side"?
What was the word? I'm sorry.
That's what I'm looking for. I don't remember, Keith used it, Peggy used it, I think.
What was the word?
Yeah.
What's the word?
Street address.
No, that wasn't it. I'm just wondering if, you know, as we work through this, I know there's an amendment.
I think what you're looking for here, that'll probably make you happy, is if you were to withdraw your amendment, make amendment again with the word that you think is more appropriate, that would be acceptable, the comments have been taking place. You understand what I'm saying? That way, for the record, you've changed the word and incorporated in another word. Does that sound like something that you'd want to do? It's your choice.
Yeah, I think I will. So I'll withdraw my amendment with the option of doing another amendment.
Yes. And I assume you want to withdraw your second so she can rephrase her amendment.
Just rephrase it, okay?
Okay. So if you will. Madam Councilwoman, it's your turn to make an amendment. No, you, you're with it, we're on this. I think you need to start from scratch. If you care to make an amendment, since you withdrew the first one, please make your amendment now.
Oh, you don't want elevation. You really don't. This will, the amendment wording would be, a building's height shall be measured by the street address, not elevated. See, that doesn't make sense. I'm going to need a moment.
I'm going to, I'll let you start over again. If you're making an amendment, we're going to take whatever words you in there. And here, we can't stop in the middle and say that doesn't make any sense. So especially when it's your own amendment.
I got it.
Okay.
A building's height shall be measured by the normal, not elevated finish grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence, railing, or other rooftop addition.
Would you like to resecond that? Sure.
You can pitch it, I just removed the word "average". Just took it out.
That's all you did.
That's correct, because it's one that was giving people angst.
Took out the word "average", that's all.
Absolutely.
Could you, yeah, thank you.
And if you look at the ordinance, you'll just see the wording. A building's height shall be measured by the normal, not elevated finish lock grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence, railing, or other rooftop addition.
I think that puts us in the same situation. We're still looking at an average overall. If you're trying to define that, you just need to say that the front, that average grade is measured on the street frontage. That's where you'd measure it. Property line, aligning the town road, wherever that is, that line would, the average grade would be there, not the entire lot. You can't do the entire lot, I can't vote for that. That's.
Street average, street address? Which one? Street frontage? How do you know what it is? Because mine has two street frontages, that's why I'm asking.
Street address.
One address.
Yeah.
All right. So the amended wording would be, a building's height shall be measured by the street frontage, not elevated, finish lock grade.
Street frontage. Well, the councilwoman has to say the word.
Can I start again?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. The amended wording would be, a building's height shall be measured by the street frontage address, not elevated, finish lock grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence, railing, or other rooftop addition.
I apologize to everybody. Could you please, one more time, please?
No problem. A building's height shall be measured by the street frontage address, not elevated, finish lock grade.
I think you got to have that word "average" street frontage in there. You can't just say "street frontage". Would you care to make the motion?
You wanted to have "average" in there?
I'll second what you just had, what you just said. I know that opens it up for more discussion. No, we're going to do it right. If, and if you, and if you.
Can I ask a clarification?
How about if you just go ahead and reword it again? I think what he's looking for is average street, street frontage address?
I think that's what he wants now.
Looking for the word "average" in there, that's all. Again.
All right. A building's height shall be measured by the average street frontage address, not elevated, finish lock grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence, railing, or other rooftop addition.
There's a motion, is there a second? Anybody can second this. But we are looking at you, Greg, since it's kind of your.
Yeah, I know. I'm still stuck up on it. I just, average street, average street frontage elevation, average street frontage.
Address.
Average street, average, street address, average. Trying to capture these lots that are on corners, when you're on, you've got two rows, and I'm trying to differentiate is, you have an address side, whatever that street address side is, it's that, that, that's the lot line you would measure and have the average elevation.
We have a motion? If you care to reword that motion again, I'll, or at least restate what your motion is. It's your call, madam.
You want the word "elevation" in there now?
You want to write down what you want? There's no misunderstanding, I'll just hand her the piece of paper.
Remember, we don't want ambiguity.
An average street frontage elevation.
We'll give it right back to you. I read my script.
You can make the motion, Greg, you got it.
I think we'll do it with you, but, but I just think if we don't clarify that. And thank you, madam, for your perseverance and your patience with me.
Average street frontage. Okay, I got it. Makes sense. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I may?
It's you.
All right, guys. A building's height shall be measured by the average street frontage elevation, comma, address side, not elevated, finish lock grade. The height shall be measured to the highest point in the roof line, which shall include rooftop deck, fence, railing, or other rooftop addition.
Second. Okay, we had a discussion on this. Is everybody ready to vote? Okay, so we're ready to vote? We have.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I need to ask clarifying question. Houses up on G Street where the roof line is, I think I'm not exaggerating when I say literally below the street grade. Am I right about that? I mean, if you, if you stand on this, on G Street.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's one house down there, I know the one you mean.
It's a couple houses, not just one, there's a couple houses that are literally, I mean, so my question is, wouldn't those houses be impossible? I mean.
I mean, I, I think I know who built that house. Yeah, I know. Gerald Donovan built that house.
Beautiful house.
It is. Slipping in that house.
I'd hate to make it illegal.
Yeah, okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post?
No.
And it passes four to two. Okay. Next, we've all had comments. So, okay, Charlie, you, you've had your comment on the, on the ordinance as a whole. Okay, now we have an amended ordinance. Okay, so I want to go to Larry, who I believe has an amendment, which would be good for either the regular ordinance or this one that is now amended. So, sir, you have the floor.
I'd like to introduce a motion to amend zoning text amendment number seven, amendment to Article Five, Section 290-19A, to read as follows. For buildings in the designated 100-year floodplain, the building height may be measured from the flood protection elevation as defined in the Floodplain Management Ordinance, Chapter 149 Town Code.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, I'll begin. Uh, Larry, the maker of the motion, I-
As I-
You have the floor.
Commented earlier, the purpose behind this particular amendment is to encourage people to take necessary steps to protect their properties and not penalize them for doing so. If we don't allow some kind of elevation of residences in the flood protection area, they will be subject to flooding, or they will be extremely limited as to what they can construct. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll begin council discussion on this amendment with the councilwoman.
Um, question on this, the, I don't have Chapter 149 with me. Do you know what that elevation is? Is it 10 feet? Is it 50 feet?
Well, it varies.
Okay.
As you move across the town.
From three to-
It could be four or five feet, or it could be less than that. It just depends on-
Okay, all right.
Where you are in the elevation of the town.
In this amendment, do you anticipate what's going to happen in that first five feet? Like, would it be an actual living room? Or is it supposed to be stilts? Or, I mean, if it's for prevention of flood damage, this just says you get an extra five feet, for example. It doesn't say in the bottom it's going to be something for-
No. It would be the equivalent of the Seagate development where they're built up above the ground.
Right. But there isn't any, what can they put on the ground floor? They can put anything on the ground floor. It doesn't, nothing in here specifies that it has to be stilts, for example, right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so the, so, okay, so the first floor, if they want to put stilts to protect it, they can. If they want to put their game room, living room, et cetera, on the first floor and have it flood, they can.
I will just comment on that, though, that if they were to do that, they will not get flood insurance from any company, including the federal government.
Okay.
If they're in the floodplain.
Thank you.
Councilman, your comments on, on the amendment?
I don't think I have the map of the floodplain, 100-year floodplain, with me tonight. Um, can you remind us where that is approximately? Like, what areas of the town?
All along the furniture until you move down to where the mayor's house is, and that starts to elevate up the hill.
Don't think I have any additional questions past what have already been asked. I think that is kind of the crux of the issue, is, you know, will, will it be utilized for that purpose to, to save that property from flood damage? Okay, thank you.
Councilman?
I have to say to admit that, that Larry's right in championing this. Um, the protection that he's talking about, though, if there are building that needed to be raised to get out of a floodplain that's been prone to flooding, um, you know, as if raising buildings as protection can be a hardship application to planning and zoning, or even to the appeals board for that matter. As far as new construction is concerned, I, I would offer that that would need the same consideration from planning and zoning. When we find that, uh, properties are prone to, prone to flooding and the property owner's solution is to raise the building, which is not to be taken lightly, that's not just, you're going to set up some pump jacks and we're going to lift my house up. Um, I, I, I think for right now, I, I would feel more comfortable that being, um, applied for as a hardship, um, through planning and zoning and in the appeals board, that's definitely a good, um, opportunity for the appeals board to get involved. So I wouldn't want to just allow somebody from protecting their property in, in the face of the oncoming, um, sea level rise, but, um, as of right now, today, I'd probably say I wouldn't support that.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I, I really just have some, some comments on, on sea level rise, if you will. Sea level rises, you know, and it's, it's, it's very timely, given the hurricanes that we just experienced this past fall. Sea level rise is real, as is the need for off-street parking in town. As elected leaders, we must have a 40-year vision. 19 years ago, I witnessed the destruction that Hurricane Isabel did to those adorable, unelevated homes at the north end of North Beach. If anybody lived here at that time, they, they know what I'm talking about. The, the devastated homeowners wisely rebuilt beautiful elevated homes. Six of the seven leaders that sit here on this dais have, live in the waterfront area and have elevated homes to a variety of degrees. Some very elevated, others not so much, but elevated. 30 years ago, my wife and I considered only one home on our bayfront block. Why? Because it's elevated on a hill, and it had a garage with off-street parking. And we know what water damage can do. And, and we do enjoy 35-foot worth of house on top of our elevation. So should we ignore sea level rise? I say no. That's my little comment.
Just want to, um, go back to what, uh, Councilman Hart, uh, Hartman said. This, people could choose to do what they want with the extra space. That's true. But in many places, the extra space would be five feet or three feet. And so it's unlikely they're going to, they're going to maneuver that into an entire extra floor. It wouldn't make any sense. So I don't see that, um, as particularly a problem. That's probably all I have to add, from what's been said so far.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. Um, this is so much better than the last time we went through this, Pat, or Mr. Mayor. You know, the comprehensive plan.
I didn't hear what you said, but you smiled, so I'll smile back.
No, it's, it's, this is so much different than the last time you and I went through this. Comprehensive plan, text amendments.
Jeez, ancient history.
Yes.
For the good.
I agree more. Um, this is what I have to say on this. I think that, um, has been, has been stated at some level, um, without conditions, let's think about where sea level rise will occur. It will, in my opinion, and I'm not an expert, will occur not in Chesapeake Village, not in where the current Chesapeake Beach Foreland Resort is, but from Windward Key down to the North Beach line, including David Street, where the marsh is, the fire hall, the shopping center, um, that one, where Lido's is, and then the Fishing Creek estuary. That's where our low-lying areas are. And so what I would argue is that, um, just having a straight-up 35-foot that's unambiguous is good. Um, the fact that we don't know exactly if it means, and it depends on a flood map, um, if it's going to be plus or minus one foot, two, two feet, three feet, five feet, seven feet, I think that adds ambiguity. And I think what we can do to avoid that ambiguity is that they can go and show the hardship to the Board of Appeals or Planning and Zoning. I think they have avenues for, uh, their grievances, if you will. I think it's better to be fair and equitable throughout the town, recognizing that we have some special places from Windward Key down Fishing Creek and David. But those property loss are not huge when you compare it to the overall number of homes that we have in town. And so saying that, I think, um, that the proper avenue to deal with their grievances, if there are such, if they wish to rebuild, if there's a, a tornado which we've had, an earthquake which we've had, a hurricane which we've all lived through, um, those sorts of catastrophic events, I am sure that rebuilding would be allowed. Potentially grandfathered in, if not, there are places to go for grievances, as I said, through the Board of Appeals. So not knowing exactly what the plus or minus is, um, because I didn't read that chapter, I'm sorry, I didn't know I would need to. I think, uh, Councilwoman Hardick made a good point, Hartman, that you, you just don't know what is, the intent is, that perhaps it's a unfinished sort of basement-type area or wash through, but there's nothing to ensure that the builder does that. So if it's decided that, um, they want to add some sort of conditions about what that intended space is used for, as opposed to a game room, I think someone said, I think that'd be appropriate. You know, if Planning and Zoning decide they want to do conditions, but as is written right now, um, the number of affected properties versus affecting throughout the town, um, and I think there are, is the process for grievance, you know, taking care of grievances through the Board of Appeals. Um, so that's my initial thought on this. You know, I'm trying to, my whole goal through this has been to add clarity and simplicity for a property owner that buys a piece of property in town, wants to know what they can do with it, and has a clear understanding, who's not a builder, who's not an engineer, who's not anything, this is what I can do if I were to purchase this property. And I want to make it as clear as possible.
Thank you very much.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, so we have thoughts there. We have, we have a motion, we have an amendment, we have a, a second. To Larry's amendment, all in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Four to two, it passes. Okay. So now we have, uh, we, we have an amended ordinance now. Okay? And it's our, and by the way, great work, council. It is just really great work, great thoughts, great sharing, and great respect for, for everybody. I really, makes me as mayor feel good, and I think the citizens should feel even better because they voted for us. Um, so now, we're just, we're, we're done with all the amendments. We're just voting on, as amended, ordinance O-22-12. Okay. Um, let's do it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes have it? Ordinance O-22-12, as amended, has passed. Good news for most folks. Now we're going to vote on ordinance O-22-13, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the Chesapeake Beach zoning map. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion on the map? I'll begin with you, Madam.
Um, I've listened to all the planning and zoning. I understand exactly what parcels they put where, why they did it. I have no further comment. I think that it's a very fair map, and I like the way that they split out the commercial districts into four. And so overall, I'm quite pleased.
Very well. Sir?
I've been remiss at this point, um, in not can, uh, really thanking Planning and Zoning Committee for the work that they've done. Uh, so I'll take the opportunity to do that now, because otherwise, um, as Councilman Morris has pointed out, uh, there's things in here that are great, things in here that are not my favorite, but overall, it's a win. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Sure.
I just wanted to, uh, comment for the record, um, that it puzzles me a little bit when I look at, uh, one particular area of zoning, and that's the RV1 zoning on the north part of town, specifically the areas that currently include Baycrest and Seagate. Uh, when you look at the definition of this RV1, neither of those developments would be allowed. So if this passes the way it's proposed, uh, those would be non-compliant development. At this point, I just find that curious as to why we would do that at this point, but that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen, sir? On the ordinance? Yeah, on the, on the-
On the map.
Thank you.
The map. I have to say that I am absolutely not in favor, and I'm strongly against, uh, the town taking over private property to add to a deficient quantity of green open spaces. That, that's just a testament to a lack of vision and planning, looking backwards, coming, coming from the, the past. I'm the 23-year resident of Richfield Station, um, so I think it's appropriate for me to comment on, um, uh, on this here. The, um, the zoning map changes that the Richfield Station developer has addressed this evening. I want to be clear about this, that what's being discussed there is the developer losing the ability to build additional homes into some small areas. Okay? It's not about, um, I know that the, um, the, the Streamwalk Way has been subdivided, and that's been on the books and on maps for a decade. But the developer is trying to squeeze in some additional houses down there. Um, you know, in the grand scheme of things, uh, I just fully expected that to be built out down there. Um, and that is something that any property owner has been able to realize and see, if we've been paying attention to the, uh, property maps. I don't, we're not here to debate the long-proposed build-outs at the trailhead townhomes either. Uh, those have been on the books, and we've got infrastructure in the ground there already for that property. Uh, and, and the developer's not trying to expand anything there. Um, I'm not particularly fond of installing homes where they were not previously anticipated by others. Speaking as a resident of the community, and, and I'm thinking about Richfield's original water tower location, where people weren't advised by the, the builder, not this, not the developer, but the builder. The, the buyers were not advised by the builder where the water tower was going to be located. Um, and we had successfully got that moved. And, um, let's see, I don't want to get too hung up on that there. Um, I mean, I recognize some of my neighbors are here tonight. As an HOA, we can certainly feel good about becoming an even larger part of the town of Chesapeake Beach. It's an amazing community. Um, and some of our decisions tonight have helped to advance it even closer to finality and development, and I would be amiss, remiss if I did not mention, the 200-acre wildlife parcel adjacent to Richfield Station needs to be turned over to Ri, to the HOA or to the town of Chesapeake Beach, uh, eventually. Uh, that's the intention of that. Uh, and there's all kinds of legal stuff flying around, um, but that helps too in completing our community there. When is the right time to transfer that property? I don't know, but it has been 30 years.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I have no additional comments on this. My comments from the ordinance stand.
I have no additional comments on this.
Very well, good. In terms of ordinance, O-22-13, we have a move to approve and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Unanimously passes. Thank you, council. Um, and introduce and vote on resolution R-22-2, a resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, appointing a new resident, who of course is Sharon Humm. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it? At the, at this time, before I get to reports of officers, boards, and committees, to, to those good folks who took a, um, time out of their evening to just come in to testify about their concerns of their neighborhood, I want to say thank you for, for coming. I know most of you have, have children, et cetera, or even maybe, maybe a dog that has to go out. I thank you for coming, and if you want, I'll take a minute for y'all to, to go ahead and go back to your normal life, or please stay and hear the rest of the wonderful things we do every third Thursday.
Thanks for the pass, Mayor.
Yeah. Somehow I knew that was coming. Okay. All right. Next, planning and zoning. I don't have a report. I think I, oh, I didn't see it. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't read. I apologize. Okay, planning and zoning, okay? I didn't see it. I don't, so I don't have any comments on it. I do want to just say, because I said, you weren't here, Larry, you know, if y'all want to go hibernate for 90 days and come back and, you know, St. Patrick's Day, that's, that's cool. 120 days, actually. But thank you for all you did. It's just, it's just, you know, remarkable. It's monumental. You've made a change. This council has joined you in something that will positively affect the future of this town for decades. And I, as mayor for six years, I'm not sure I've ever been prouder. So, thank you. And I'm glad I mentioned St. Patrick's Day, because that may give you a hint of what I'll be doing later. Okay, enough of that.
He smiles a lot more now.
Yeah. Board of Appeals, no hearing held. C-Box, did we get a report from Sue?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We got a report. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry, anything to say?
Couple things. The Coastal Resiliency Task Force meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 29th at 12:30. And Chair Jeff Foltz of the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee has a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, December 6th at 6:00 PM. Earlier today, Town Administrator Holly Wall and I were on a Zoom meeting with representatives of EPA to talk about a program they call CREET, which stands for Climate Resistance Evaluation and Awareness Tool, which is a tool EPA has, oh, I'm sorry, Jay Berry participated as well, excuse me, Jay, in the call. It provides technical assistance to communities in planning to protect their utilities. Right now, Chesapeake Beach is one of only three communities, including Chrisfield and Cambridge, to participate in this program. So we'll keep you informed on that as we go forward. Co-Chair Keith, anything to add?
I would say, don't go anywhere, sir. EDC?
Oops, I lost my report.
It's okay, Larry.
No, no, I got it right here. I got it, I got it. Yeah, don't. Meeting of the Calvert County Economic Development Authority was on Monday, November 14th. The discussion included funding the counties received from, through the ARPA program for a small business assistance grant. If you're a small business, please listen up, because these are grants, not loans. So there's no payback, and it's up to $50,000. Total funding the county has received is $600,000. So we're in a position to give out a bunch of these loans. I checked the County Economic Development Authority site for details. The Economic Development Authority is looking for additional members to serve. Contact the county. Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, we had a meeting of the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission. We discussed several issues covered at the EDA meeting, including the small business assistance grants, discussed the update of the county's strategic plan for economic development, and we're looking to fill a couple vacancies in the EDAC as well. And then we had a very interesting tour of the county's 911 center, which was fascinating to see inside that facility. So it was really very interesting. That's all I have. Co-Chair Greg, anything to add?
Thank you.
Joki, thank you. Green Team, Madam Councilwoman.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Callum's Committee, Greg Morris, for being at our last meeting. We really enjoyed having him, and he was, we look forward to working hand in hand when it comes to any way that we, as a Green Team, can help you. And the committee's excited about it. So we look forward, absolutely. Also, just so you know, we are hoping to do a tree inventory on town-owned properties. That would be this spring with Brian Stupak with the Maryland Forest Service. So we look forward to that opportunity to really get a handle on what we have on our municipal properties. Our next actual event will be Saturday, March 4th, and it'll be a talk at the Northeast Community Center in cooperation and coordination with Calvert County Parks and Recs, Erica Love, and the Northeast Community Center. So other than that, our next meeting is Thursday, January 26th at 6:30. And we just look forward to continuing to participate with all the committees in town, like the Callum's Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and I have to tell you, Mr. Morris, I was, I was telling my wonderful bride that I was looking for an acronym for your committee, and I said, what about, you know, KRC? Was she rejected? Because she thought it sounded too much like KFC. So for now, we're just going to go Callum's Revitalization Committee, Councilwoman Morris.
I still might hearken back to WKRP. My file is still titled that, by the way.
You're much older than me, my wife.
Yeah, I try to be brief. I really don't have too much to update. I'm going to reference Wayne's update again here. I did want to elaborate briefly on the Green Team meeting. They'd had invited me to come down and talk. And I have to say that it was certainly a breath of fresh air for me to be in around that, in that environment, with that enthusiasm in the room. I just was very proud to be part of all of that, and to be on the front edge of that, so to speak, whatever that front edge is. So, you know, we are looking forward to the input there and talking. I would like to, I'm going to restate a couple things here, referencing Wayne's update. It seems appropriate that we should try to wrap up this second blush at the Callum's overall plan and present it to Council at some point early next year. Gently following, like to make, have a public Callum's meeting again, so we can take some criticism and constructive ideas, blah, 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 attempt to put together what could be a simple, a semifinal draft of what Callum's can be. And to coin a phrase borrowed from my colleague Larry Jaworski, mentioned at the opening of the Coastal Resiliency Committee, there is plenty of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hardick, Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, which I am not seeking an acronym for.
We need one.
Okay, that's your assignment, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we have not had a meeting since our, since our last Town Council meeting. But our subcommittee continues to work on the overdose awareness sculpture project. And I mentioned this, I think, at our, in our work session, but the call for artists went out. So this was originally announced at, on August 1st, our partnership with the Calvert Arts Council and Joe Davis, which we really appreciate them helping us pull this event off. And so that was officially released, hey, about two weeks ago now, I think. And the proposals are due by January 31st. And then the judging by a jury arts committee will begin within two weeks after the submission. Artist notifications will go out in February, and then they'll have about five months to actually construct those sculptures. And then notify us of those, deliver those sculptures, and then we'll have the installation and dedication by August 31st of 2023, kind of the outline of the plan. And kudos go to Sandy Mattingly for leading that subcommittee and pulling this together. So that is great. Also, just wanted to share some of the work that our partners are doing in CASA and the Calvert County Health Department, Local Behavioral Health Authority. So they are putting together a postcard that's going to go out, that's kind of to help raise awareness about the suicide crisis that is, you know, currently going on. But they're going to be mailing these out throughout the county, making people aware of what are some of the signs that someone might be contemplating suicide and where they can get help. They're specifically targeting teams or families with teens. And again, that's the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and then, of course, the Calvert Crisis Response Forum, for a more local resource. 1-877-467-5628. And I think with that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fink, W-KAG? Are we good with that?
It's a lot.
Okay, Walkable Community Advisory Group, Councilman Fink.
Okay. So we had a meeting. We have just a lot of projects going on. We can talk about them at late night. We've seen a little book. We can actually tell them this. 261 Safe House School. We can use the forward. We have a lot of that.
Yeah. Excuse me. Is there a motion to separate these two?
We placed them together.
Please continue.
So I just, you know, I'd just say that a lot of these are real, these are things that have been taught us. We should give the community more credit for what we have in this. And so we're excited about that. We're finishing, as far as we can, as close as we can to the House of the Senate, especially in Massachusetts.
Thank you. In addition, should I think maybe like presenting the Callum's Plan when we have a second blush plan, maybe we could present the pictures of the parks as they have been envisioned, once we get a good idea of what we'd like to send out for RFP to the Town Council. I think that would be nice.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. No unfinished business, new business. Town Council to consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ComKate to permit tracking software and access to a citizen portal totaling $9,125 in year one fees and $6,375 in annual fees from the FY23 General Fund Annual Software Line item. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Town Council to consider awarding a three-year time and material contract to Windmill Farms for snow plow services with no costs incurred by the town unless there is a snow and ice event. Costs are to be allocated to the General Fund Snow Removal Line item. Motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment? We're out of public. He's an official, but he's, he's a public official, as we are. Thank you. Okay. Council Lightning Round, I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time with your family, and I hope you have a wonderful meal. And I look forward to, once again, light up the town. It is one of the better events that we have in town. It's a wonderful day.
Absolutely. Leaving here a long time, I will keep this short, and everything I have to say is very positive, or funny, at least to me.
You say that every Lightning Round.
I know, I know. First off, I want to just say, you know, I just want to thank my colleagues in working through those ordinances. I know, I just, to keep it short, I will just say that the wordsmithing and crafting of that language is outstanding, and everyone has a nit to pick and wants it to be exactly right. And I respect everyone for doing that. So thank you. It's a pleasure to work with, with all of you. I don't know if Brittany's still here. I just want to make one other comment about that financial report. You know, how many other towns, someone mentioned this after I had commented about, you know, how good that report was, but how many other towns are not in that situation right now? Stop and think about that. How many other municipalities are not where we are because they didn't plan appropriately?
I have the answer. 156 of 157 in Maryland.
Yeah. So that's, that's outstanding, and something for all of us to share in. And then just to wrap up, so WKRP in Cincinnati, the one of the all-time classic television shows of all time, of any show, outdoes Seinfeld anything, is the Thanksgiving, this episode, this particular episode, bear with me. Thanksgiving 1979, Les Nessman decided that they should give out free turkeys, which is a worthy goal, I think we would all agree. He decided to give out the turkeys by taking the news helicopter, flying over the city, and throwing frozen turkeys out the helicopter.
As God is my witness, I thought turkeys could fly.
And to quote Les Nessman, "Oh, the humanity." And so if, I guarantee you can find that on YouTube. With that, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir.
Told you I'd be funny.
Yeah.
He was right.
Yeah. Couple things. One is, I wanted to echo my colleague, Mr. Fink's comments on the discussion tonight on the ordinances. I think it is imperative that we not agree on every single thing. That's why we're here, is to share our thoughts and ideas and make me think of things that I hadn't thought of. So good job tonight. Coming up things, first of all, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Make sure you watch the Macy's Parade, see Santa come in. Light up the town on Sunday, the 27th at 4:00 PM. Pat Carpenter Holiday Parade on Saturday, December 3rd at noon. And again, the upcoming Holiday Lights Tour is going to be leaving here from Town Hall, and we'll put out information on that very soon. And that's scheduled for Saturday, December 10th from 5:00 to 8:00. Thank you.
Why should we watch Macy's? To see Santa come into town?
Oh, Santa. Okay, I thought maybe you had. I had a friend once who was on that.
Oh, no.
I put a friend in there. Okay. And I just want to make a quick comment to add to what, you know, Larry said about, you know, you know, working together and all that other kind of stuff. And of course, we've all hear the old phrase, and it's true that, you know, that's all great and everything. You disagree, but when you walk out that door, that should be behind you. It has to be behind you. Otherwise, you're going to, you're going to die of an ulcer. You know, you just put it behind you and be friendly with those who you're, those colleagues who you were elected to serve with for four-year periods. And I'm, as I said earlier, I'm very proud of this group that the citizens of Chesapeake Beach elected. So thank you, sir.
Well, I'd like to follow along behind that. Certainly, we'd like to have our changes seen to fruition, but I don't ever mind being on the losing end of a vote, as long as we've, we're talking about stuff up, up board, and it's on the table, and this process is working. I can walk away happy on the losing end of a vote. What I wanted to lead in with was sports betting coming to a local establishment near you. I'm not opposed to the sports betting. You might, somebody might see me there placing a bet once in a while. I just hope, hopefully we're not going to be inundated with promotions and commercials, unlike the NFL. It's a little distasteful, if you ask me, the promotional level there. But anyway, holiday season here in town, we all know this to be true, among the very best times of the year to be in and around town. So I hope to see you all in and around town. Thank you.
And before I go to Keith, it's 8:56, and I've got the under on, on before 9 o'clock. You're up, sir.
All right. Well, I have about 10 minutes worth of comments, so prepare. Now, one, I want to just wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're going anywhere. Two, I wanted to thank, once again, the Planning and Zoning Commission and all the residents for all their input on this process. And three, I just wanted to recognize where we are right now. Many of us were elected, you know, six years ago, kind of with this idea of small-town charm and putting forward some of these ideas and getting them on the books. And we've accomplished that as a night in many ways with, with these new ordinances. And I think, listen, listen to the people and...
A celebration.
There you go. And so with that, have a great night.
Oops, sorry, Peggy. I thought it would go off. But anyhow, yeah, you got two minutes. Go ahead.
Interesting, but your comment, because my comment leads on that. Last year on November 18th, so basically a year ago, because the 18th is a year and a day, is when you appointed me as a Town Councilwoman. So this is my end of my first full year, and I have to say, what a year, when the first thing that happened after I got here was I got the comprehensive plan, and said, this is what we're working on. And I was like, oh, why didn't he stay? Why didn't he stay just a little longer?
Or not, Derek.
Indeed, indeed. But it has been, I have to say, an amazing first-year experience to do, to go through that comprehensive plan and learn all the parts that take running a town. Because, you know, more than 60 years I've been living in towns, and I had no idea how they ran. So I think it's incredible. I mean, having the experience here in the town, participating with town things has been wonderful. I look forward to the next year. year. And I would like to thank Sharon for stepping up and becoming the new resident agent. I don't know what you did to get that, but yeah, good luck. And also, of course, planning and zoning, amazing. I mean, it just, in the beginning of this year, I have to say, coming into it, it really looked like madness coming, and that it got even wrapped up in this year is incredible to me. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy and unhealthy Thanksgiving.
So Councilwoman, in, in celebration of your one-year anniversary, I'd like you to make the motion to adjourn.
I make motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. That's yours, yeah. Yeah. And they work. And they work.